Evening, everyone. Welcome to Oviedo City Hall. We have a packed house tonight, which is always great to see. To start our meeting, we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to introduce from Troop 931 their Honor Guard, which is Mr. Rob Minari. Rob, where are you? Come on up. Brian, is that microphone on? Hang on a second, Rob. Let's just make sure that microphone's on down there.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart. Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do.
Well, thank you, Rob. Give him a round of applause. Chief White, will you do the honor for our invocation this evening?
Good evening, council and everyone in attendance. Well, Veterans' Day just around the corner, if that would be appropriate, to dedicate tonight's prayer to our veterans. So if you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're so grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy, not only in this community, but across this great nation. We have representatives here tonight from the American Legion post. We're so honored to have them here every time they come to these chambers and remember the sacrifices they made. Lord, we pray for them, for their health, for their safety, for their families. Lord, we look at these young boys that are in the crowd tonight, that are endeavoring to move up in their organization, the Boy Scouts, and what they offer to our community as well. We pray for them, for their families, for their health, their safety. So, Lord, let us remember tonight, let us remember all of our veterans on Veterans' Day, and let's remember them year-round. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:35 PM. This is the City Council regular meeting of Monday, November 5th. We have all members of council present. Our first item on our agenda this evening is a ceremonial item, and it is the Oviedo Purple Heart City Proclamation. At this time, I'd like to introduce and call up to the podium Mr. Dana Gowan from the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 400. Ms. Gowan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. When I speak, I like to speak to everybody.
If you can grab the microphone, so that way the clerk can pick it up for the record. You can just pull it right off of there, and that'll be perfect, sir.
Yeah, but I used to use Army Drill, and nobody's ever said that they couldn't hear me ever. But I'll do this. This is sort of solemn, and I do between 25 and 40 speeches like this a year, mostly to college and high school ROTC. And I've done Oviedo High School, and some of you may have seen me there. What I'd like to talk to you about before I get right into the proclamation here is a little bit of the history of the Purple Heart, because without history, we just don't know why things happened. The Purple Heart was not always for wounds. In 1782, when George Washington created this medal, it was for other reasons. It was for essential service, fidelity, and gallantry. It fell out of service, out of use after the Revolutionary War, and was not given out again until MacArthur and President Hoover re-missioned or repurposed the medal as to be one for wounds, also losing your life, because that is a, it's a mortal wound, but it's still a wound. But during the revolution, Washington wanted something else, and the reason they wanted it is because they knew what they were going to do after this war. And what they were going to do was make a country that was not ruled by royalty or other elitists. This was going to go away. This was the new world, and that was the old world. And we were going to do it a different way, where the common man, by going to the polls, which we're going to do tomorrow, electing his representatives, he was going to govern himself. He wasn't going to be subject to a king or queen. And in the mid-1700s, there was nobody on this earth who had freedom. They were all underneath some form of royalty, or in certain countries, under the power of the clergy. But they had no votes. They didn't do that. Washington and the revolutionaries at that time knew what they were going to do, and it was a rejection, clear and simple, of Europe. They didn't want any part of it. Because, at least in the military, the European custom was that only the officers got medals. And we can see them on pictures when we go to museums, they got the Order of the Garder all over. But the officers got the medals for proficiency in battle and winning the battle or the war. The fighting man got absolutely nothing. Washington was going to change this, because in a republic that they were going to form, that was operated under democratic principles, the common man was going to be at the forefront. And that's why he did this. They wanted a complete rejection of Europe. A little later on, just as a side, it only took about 20 years after they created the Constitution, that this was reinforced, and it was reinforced by President Monroe in the Monroe Doctrine. We all, I learned about it in school. I don't know whether that's taught anymore. Do we all know what the Monroe Doctrine is, right? Because the leaders at the time, and James Monroe came in in 1817, or something like that, they weren't going to go to all the trouble of making a country here and allow some other power from Europe, might even have been England, but it could have been Germany, or France, or any other power to come in to South America, start a major country, and then start challenging us for our supremacy here. Monroe made it very clear, the Western Hemisphere of this world is going to be controlled by America, and we are not going to have any rivalries here. Why? Because that would just lead to constant war. So, this idea of separating us from Europe is deeply embedded in us, and we should remember that. In 1932, the medal was repurposed, and now it's for wounds and death. But it has to be done by the enemy. You can't shoot yourself in the foot. It has to be done by an enemy who's holding a weapon, an instrument of war, in the hands of the enemy, who has the goal of killing or maiming the American soldier. Regarding this proclamation tonight, this is a new thing for the Military Order of the Purple Heart. We give out ROTC awards all the time, but this is relatively new for us. So this is only the second time I've done one. I did Seminole County last year. But this is only the second time I've done one, and we're welcoming these entities who want to become Purple Heart entities. When I talked to Mr. Kelly, he's not up there, Pat Kelly, I said, "What?" There he is. I said, "What can you offer us?" Not that we're looking for money, or anything like that, no, or a line item on your budget. And he and I discussed it in your office, and he told me prior to entry here that there is going to be a program here. I called it a watch-over program. You can call it whatever you want, done by volunteers, where you will find the Purple Heart people who live in your city, and just every once in a while, go around and see that they're okay. You know, a lot of them have very bad PTSD. We still lose between 20 and 30 soldiers every week, I guess, who commit suicide in this country, or a day, which is tragic, because they don't get the human contact that they need to adjust their lives and fit into society. So, Mr. Kelly and I sort of developed a program where the veterans in this community will be contacted every once in a while. Make sure you're okay. You know, do you have support? Is there somebody living with you who can help you? Are you living alone? Do you have enough food? You know, what can we do for you if you have a problem? That's wonderful. That's what the Purple Heart really needs. What the men need is their communities to take an interest in them and come around and just check on them every once in a while, to see that they're okay. Yes, we do have a plaque for you. I don't know how you're scheduled on that. There we go.
What we'll do is, why don't we come join you?
Yep.
And then I'll read the proclamation.
Somebody else is going to do it.
Anybody who would like to come up and join us, any of the veterans? Come on up. Come on up. Anyone else?
Well, we have a proclamation that we'd like to read right now. It's a proclamation from the City of Oviedo, and it reads, "Whereas the City Council and the citizens of the City of Oviedo, Florida, have abundant admiration and the utmost gratitude for all who have served and are selflessly serving in our nation's armed services. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way. Whereas citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singular meritous act of essential service. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the City of Oviedo, Florida seeks to honor and remember our veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore, I, Dominic Prisampier, Mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim the City of Oviedo as a Purple Heart City, and I encourage all of our citizens of Oviedo to show heartfelt appreciation for the sacrifices made by Purple Heart recipients and to honor the selfless acts they have made in defense of our freedoms. In witness whereof, I have set my hand to this on the 5th day of November 2018." Sir, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed," excuse me, "with pride to the City of Oviedo, Florida, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans and becoming the Purple Heart City. And this is presented by the Patriot Members of Chapter 400, Orlando, Florida, Military Order of the Purple Heart, USA. Go, USA."
All right. Don't forget, so for all of your service, each and every one of you, we are very proud to be able to have this honor bestowed not only upon us, but upon all citizens here in the City of Oviedo. Thank you for your service. Thank you. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. Don't pretend so much for all of your service, each and every one of you. We are very proud to be able to have this honor bestowed not only upon us, but upon all citizens here in the City of Oviedo. Thank you for your service. Thank you. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work. Unless you'd like to hold your cap, if you're going to address the orders. All right. We're going to make a short precess, because I know some of you want to clear out how this is going to work.[1255.12]
and address those questions that we weren't able to address at the meeting. Once she's done, Mayor, it's recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1677.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Good evening, council members. As Brian mentioned, at your previous meeting on October 15, the council discussed several items. First one being microbreweries, micro distilleries, and microwineries, their parking standards, questions raised at the LPA meeting. The questions were also raised regarding whether or not the senior citizen housing types match the statutes. And then a couple of questions on the requirements and standards for boat docks.
Could you just hold the microphone in more? There you go.
Thank you. The questions regarding the parking standards for the microwinery breweries and distilleries, the senior housing, and the boat docks were addressed at the previous meeting in terms of the pitch of the roof. But in terms of whether or not boat houses and boat terminals or decks would be allowed without being a component of a boat dock, that is something that staff did look into. So, to answer the question, yes, a boat dock can stand on its own without being a component of a boat house. So, with that, we changed the definition in the ordinance to keep it the way it is for boat docks. So, that definition you will not see in this proposed ordinance. In terms of the boat house, the language changed from the boat house being required to be a component to being maybe a component. And then for boat terminals, we removed the language that it is required as part of a component of a boat dock. Additionally, we also made one change to Article 18 regarding basic definitions relative to shopping centers. The way it's written now, it's just as shopping centers, and it has standards for signs. The original intent was for that provision or that definition to be specifically to shopping center signs. With that, no other changes are made to this proposed ordinance since the public hearing on October 15. And with that, staff recommends approval, and I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against ordinance number 1677? Don't all jump up at once. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1677.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Hicken, you have the floor.
No, this has been vetted so many times, we're good.
Deputy Mayor?
A good job.
Great. Councilmember?
I wanted to ask one quick question, and that is about flag lots and antiquated subdivisions. As I was reading this, it looks like cross-access easements are not permissible, but flag lots are. Just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes, ma'am. The way the code is written now, one could create flag lots as part of a lot split. But the way the language that is proposed, that would not change. The only requirement is now that new lots have to have at least 20-foot of public or private roadway access. So, it could allow for a flag lot if, you know, that's the case, or if the lot is such that the only way that they could create lots is to create a flag lot, we could allow that. There's nothing in the existing code or in the proposed code that would either prohibit or require a flag lot.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure that it was still theoretically possible. Right, thank you.
Yes, but only through a public access or private access.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Councilman Pollock?
Looks good.
All righty, I just have one quick question on the boat docks. We had some debate last time, one-story, two-story, one-story boat docks, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir. One-story boat docks, the standard stays the way it was before as far as the required pitch of the roof. And we just made it clear that a non-pitch roof used as a deck for entertainment purposes would not be allowed. So, that stays the same.
Okay, thank you. All righty, any other questions from council? Seeing and hearing none, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1677. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving along, we have no first reading of ordinances. We have no resolutions. We have no discussion items. City managers report. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that on Wednesday morning, I'll be attending an ethics conference in Sanford, and so I'll be out of pocket for that morning, but I'll be back in the afternoon.
All righty. I thought you weren't at Florida League of Cities this year. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That's it, Mayor.
Mr. Grude, anything from the city attorneys?
Nothing at all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Grude.
All righty. Moving on to our reports, council members later.
Just one thing, and that is encouragement to listen to what Bobby Fishbo has to say about bringing bike trails to Oviedo. He's very enthusiastic, and if we look back at the course of enthusiasm that followed our citizen-led interest in public art, that turned out, I think, very well. So, as this unfolds in the next year, just want to urge you to be creative and think outside the box on the bike situation.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
All righty. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
I am good. I just want to wish everyone well tomorrow, Bob, Judith. Good luck to you all. I'm going to breathe a big sigh of relief tomorrow when this is all over, but best of luck to you, and way to keep it above board, is I guess a way to say it. So, good luck. Bob, you too.
Great. Anything else?
Nope.
Excellent. I'll be short and brief. We all attended the Oviedo High School Homecoming Parade this past Thursday, and as usual, it was an extremely well-attended event. I do believe the Lions won their homecoming game, and now they're going on to state championship round. So, best of luck to them. And don't want to break the streak, but I do want to point out that UCF is 21 in a row, and the flag will fly on Friday. And they will beat Navy, and if there's any Navy guys out there, I am sorry, but, you know, it's just what has to happen in order to make it number 22?
Rich went home already.
Yeah, Rich left. I saw him. Rich Sloan is going to be so, he's going to be struggling, because he worked for UCF, but he's a Navy captain, so we don't know what poor Rich is going to do. But that is the end of my report, and as was mentioned, best of luck to everybody tomorrow. It's the end of the road. We've all been there, and we know what it feels like. Bob, you're up. Councilmember Pollock?
All right. The high school parade was a great event. I wish Hagerty would have had one this year as well, but it was only Oviedo. I want to give a thanks to the Public Works Department for helping out with one of the neighborhoods who had a sidewalk issue before Halloween, and they took care of that. They also took care of some other complaints, or not complaints, but concerns from citizens recently, and they're doing a great job. Thank you so much, Bobby, and please let your staff know that we really appreciate it. Also, the Parks and Rec staff helped out with last-minute requests for an event, because it was going to get rained out, and so they moved it over to the Aquatic Center, and they did a great job as well. So, just want to thank the staff, and you all are doing a great job, and you make us look good up here. So, thank you.
Anything else, Bob? Councilmember Hicken?
Just two quick things. I will echo what my colleague said. Tomorrow's Election Day, so I wish my colleagues up here, Keith, Bob, good luck tomorrow. Judith, I wish you the best as well. Judith is a very nice person and always runs her campaigns nice, so good luck to you. And, you know, Wednesday morning, you'll be able to sleep late again, right? We've all been there, so good job.
No, 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 no sleeping. Pick up the signs, then go to sleep.
No, you got to do that Tuesday night, and you sleep late Wednesday, you know?
That's how you do it.
Yeah, you got to go out at 3:00, 4:00 a.m., get it all done, surprise everybody, but no, good luck to everybody tomorrow. And we have no second meeting in November, so I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and all the best. That's it.
Anything else? All righty, so future meeting dates, we do have, as was mentioned, our Monday meeting, November 19, has been canceled. That falls on the week of Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, December 3, 5:30 p.m. We have a CRA Governing Board meeting, and then at 6:30 p.m. we have our regular session. Then we have no second meeting in December, so we move on to Monday, January 7, 6:30 p.m. And then Tuesday, and it is correct, it is Tuesday, January 22, at 6:30 p.m., 2019, of course, will be our regular session. So, with all that being said, is there anything else with the good of the order? Mr. Cobb?
Mayor, I do have one thing. There is a possibility that you will, your CRA meeting will be canceled over December, so I was talking to Mr. Jones today, and it's looking like we may not have to have the meeting. So, just want to let you know, but...
Keep us posted. All righty, so as Mr. Cobb said, I will announce that our December 3, 5:30 p.m. CRA Governing Board session is a, sounds like a definite maybe, so we'll just leave it at that.
That sounds good.
Anything else of good of the order? Seeing and hearing none, it is about eight minutes after 7:00. We're adjourned.